I'd like to call the zoning commission regular meeting to order for Monday, April 3rd, 2017. The first order of business is actually is to appoint an acting chair, because we don't have a chair or a secretary.
Make a motion to appoint Kevin Gray as the acting chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you for stepping up, sir.
I didn't have a choice, the signs were already there. All right. Second order of business is appointment of alternates. And Tom, I guess we appoint you for David, since you're the only alternate here. Then, third item is approval over the minutes of March 20th. Anybody have any comments on the minutes? No? Great job, did not. All right. Absent any changes, then the minutes of March 20th are approved. We will note what an excellent job the acting secretary, actually, what do they call them?
Acting town clerk, or not town clerk, acting clerk for the zoning commission.
Yes. All right, public hearings, there are none. So the next order of business is, all business is applications and application 1706 of Kevin Kowalski. Mr. Kowalski, do you have anything to say to us?
The only I can say is I'm hoping that this is it.
Let's hope.
Mr. Chairman, you do have a draft report from Mike Glidden, Assistant Town Planner, in that report, there's a recommended draft motion. That motion is formulated in a favorable manner. It contains a number of proposed conditions plus modifications.
The conservation commission did give a approval.
Conservation commission did give a favorable report to be approved.
They're normal conditions.
Awesome.
Anybody have any questions on this?
We've covered this one.
Yeah, a couple.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application 1706 of Kevin Kowalski, Fire Marshal, Agent Town of Simsbury, owner for a site plan amendment for the installation of playground equipment at Rotary Park on the property located on the border of the Performing Arts Center, property at 22 Iron Horse Boulevard, Assessors Map H09 Block 226 Lot 003A. And the property adjacent to the southern boundary of the same, shown on the Assessors Map as Map H10 Block 226 Lot 002. Site plan amendment approval is subject to following conditions of approval. Number one, conditions of approval associated with CC permit number 17-03 are also incorporated in the zoning commission approval. Number two, a zoning permit is required for the site improvements. Number three, minor field adjustments to grading and landscaping may be made based on field conditions upon written approval from the town planner, who has been given the authority on behalf of the Town Zoning Commission to act on our behalf.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Tom, second me. Do we have any discussion on this?
I'm in favor of it. You've seen it, you've discussed it. Good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you ask?
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time. Thanks. All right, next application, application 1707 of Farm to Family, Inc., doing business as Community Farm of Simsbury, Agent Town of Simsbury, owner for a site plan amendment to the construction of two high tunnels at Community Farm on the property located at 73 Walcott Road. Do we have anyone to speak to that?
Joanne Hervey, Operations Director for Farm to Family, and as Community Farm of Simsbury. So if you've had a chance to look at it, we're looking to put in two high tunnels. We received funding for the high tunnels from the Mortenson Foundation and the U.S. Department of Agriculture through their NCRS group. And the high tunnels are proposed for the side of the barn. They'll be in our educational field, they will help, they'll be used for our educational program, they will extend our growing season. The high tunnels are plastic carbonate on the top, they are not permanent structures, and the ground inside is actually the earth. So they're plowed, and we grow right in the ground. And that's a little bit different than our last year's addition, which was a green town at the Community Farm. So the benefit of the education purpose and the benefit of extending our growing season are the two main reasons for the proposal.
Again, Mr. Chairman, with regards to the application 17-07, you have a report from Mike Glidden. Contained in that report is a proposed draft motion. That motion is formulated in a favorable manner.
Okay, I want to see the draft motion.
It's right in the back.
He's back.
You can take mine, or I can read it. If there's no other questions or...
No, you can write, read the motion.
All right. Motion to approve application 17-07 of Farm to Family, Inc., doing business as Community Farm of Simsbury, Agent Town of Simsbury, owner for a site plan amendment for the construction of two high tunnels at Community Farm on the property located at 73 Walcott Road.
Quick second.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
We've seen this. You know, we've thought over it. I'm in favor of it.
Are they just seasonal, right? Or are they...
They will be a permanent structure, not a long-term permanent structure. So they're not going to come, they don't go up and down during the season, they will be there. But they can be removed whenever we need to. They're not, because they're just staked into the ground, and it's just wood, polycarbonate, and the ribs that hold the plastic in place.
Are they different from the one on the east side?
No, they're the same, that's, yep.
You have a motion on the table.
No, it's a discussion, we have some questions.
We missed that window.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can you ask?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is application 1708 of Javier Campos Adams and Ruxton Construction Agent Bank of America for a site plan amendment for the construction of ADA upgrades on the property located at 74 Hot Meadow Street.
Just that James Kenosian from Stonefield Engineering is here to walk you through or answer any questions that you may have.
Absolutely. So good evening, everyone. My name's James Kenosian with Stonefield Engineering, on behalf of the applicant, Bank of America. Essentially, what we're here to represent is the exterior ADA upgrades that Bank of America is proposing within the parking lot, the sidewalk, and the existing ramp. In 2010, the federal ADA regulations were revised, and ever since then, over the past seven years, Bank of America has been striving to upgrade essentially all of their banking branches throughout the Northeast to comply with the federal ADA code to allow for handicap accessibility. When we go and investigate a property, essentially the first thing is we identify the accessible points or accessible features that need to be incorporated into a design. And that would be the front entrance with an ATM, as well as a deposit box, which is located just to the left of the entrance. From there, we need to provide a path from the ADA parking area, as well as from the public sidewalk. So what we've proposed is to reconstruct portions of the asphalt, reconfigure the parking area so that the necessary two ADA parking spaces are proposed with the minimum widths for ADA spaces and access aisles. The ADA signage would be upgraded to comply with state and federal regulations. And then the path from the parking area and from the public sidewalk would be reconstructed to comply with the minimum, or excuse me, the maximum slope requirements along that path, and the minimum dimensions for maneuverability. I have the plans, and I could post them up if there are specific questions. We did receive the review letter, we are in agreement with all those, with all those comments, they could certainly be made a condition of approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
He's talking about all the condition, okay, just making sure, saying the same thing? Is that a challenge? That's quite grading there, right?
It was, it was actually when you consider it versus other Bank of America branches, it is actually quite challenging, because it is a very steep driveway, an ingress-only driveway. So what we had to do was reconstruct that asphalt, we wanted to maintain all existing drainage patterns, but also provide that somewhat level area for the, to comply with the maximum 2% for the ADA parking spaces. So it was a little bit more challenging, a little bit more extensive amount of reconstruction than you'll normally see in a smaller property. But, yeah, hopefully, we're able to make it work.
Anybody else have questions for that?
Does the parking, how many spots are there presently?
Overall, I believe it's 48 if you include the rear parking lot in the back. In the area of improvements, there's essentially two parking spaces that would be reconfigured generally about the same location, and then there's another seven immediately next to it along that one-way drive aisle. So those are the spaces in that immediate area of improvements, there's a whole large parking lot in the rear, but we won't be touching any of it.
So that was effective capacity. And is there other two existing handicap spots?
There are, there's two existing spots. However, they do share a common access aisle in between them, and that's not actually up to code, they actually each need to have their own independent aisles. So that's why it is a little bit, just slightly widened for that pavement area to comply.
Okay. Entertaining the motion here.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, I motion to approve application 1708 of Javier Campos Adams, Ruxton Construction Agent, Bank of America, Fleet Bank MA, owner for a site plan amendment for the construction of ADA upgrades on the property located at 740 Hot Meadow Street, Assessors Map G10 Block 227 Lot 003, Zone SC1. Approval is based on plans titled Bank of America ADA Upgrades, Simsbury, Connecticut, prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design, Revision Date 1/26/2017. Site plan amendment approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. An administrative zoning permit is required for the site improvements. Final plan shall incorporate the following modifications. A, the applicable professional stamp and signatures. B, topography is to be shown on Sheet C5, which incorporates recent improvements to sidewalk along Hot Meadow Street. Sheet C5 is to be revised to accurately depict the proposed elevation 198, which is beyond paving limits of proposed work area. D, grading percentage of ADA spaces shall be changed to 1.5 in order to, 1.5% in order to accommodate town engineering concern for potential of drainage issues associated with the area. And E, all accessible symbols, both signage and pavement markings are to comply with Figure 703.6.3.1, international symbol for accessibility as noted in the Connecticut State Building Code. And last, condition approval from Connecticut Department of Transportation, District 4, is required for all work within Route 10 right-of-way. Said approval is to be secured, and written proof is to be provided to the planning department for the issuance of the zoning permit. Four, minor field adjustments to grading and landscape may be made based on field conditions upon written approval from the town planner, who has been given the authority on behalf of the Town Zoning Commission, and act on our behalf.
Any discussion?
All in favor? I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
And bail's done, yeah?
Good.
Okay, you have a second?
Thank you very much.
It's awesome, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Next item is new business, received applications, application 1709 of Chris Malart, Phase 2 Design.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to this application, Phase 0 design was at the Design Review Commission this evening. Design Review unfortunately did not have a forum, so that was tabled to next month. They are proposing some slight modifications to the, kind of the quick lane and Volvo side. They originally had a hard awning structure, and they are looking at alternatives to that, which would be a claw awning. And again, they were in front of the Design Review this evening for that. Also, with regards to the Volvo dealership, they had certain window placement, and some were opaque, and others were whited out, and there's a slight modification to those. I do have the renderings in my office, I apologize if we brought them back there from earlier, but we could go over those quickly. Or, again, it was tabled until the 17th of Design Review.
So do we have to see, can we see it the same day Design Review?
You could see it tonight, if you would like. If you give me one minute, we'll wrap those.
Or do we just wait Design Review?
Oh, no, that's fine. I was just, that's what I was saying is, so...
I could show them very quickly, just so you have an understanding of what the change is.
Okay. Is it different than the package we got? The change from our package? What did?
My question is still, as opposed to Design Review?
That night, we could...
We do, yeah, typically, we get their referral. Okay, that's, I'm just double checking. That's the same idea.
You'll have their verbal referral.
Right.
Yeah, we don't, because the same night, usually have time to write up a formal approval.
I know. But that's, I'm saying, we can still discuss it that same night, we don't have to move it to May for any reason. Hours.
So did they resubmit new stuff from what they submitted Thursday or Friday?
It differs from what was previously approved by both commissions.
Yeah. Really?
Here he is. We won.
Time for a new watch, oh.
That was a family.
Oh, good for you.
I'm jealous.
Just, again, quickly, Mr. Chairman, this evening, with the quick lane, and that's Chairman Gray. Originally, for the quick lane, there was a hard banded, almost pergola-type structure with a fixed roof that was cabled back into the front facade. They're proposing to modify that to a claw awning.
Like that, as that rendering, that's the car.
Similar to that rendering. We've asked for color samples, and they will provide them to us. As I did also mention... So they're showing it both on their hot meadow facing, and then southern facing elevation, as well as where the existing Volvo is, both on the hot meadow side and the northern side.
The plans are coming along now.
What you have in your package does not show any awnings.
At all, yes.
At all.
Right.
We've had a few conversations with them between submission and this evening. Just quickly, with regards to the Volvo dealership, they modified the window, not necessarily the window placement, but the opaque versus the clear aspects of the windows to frame the centers of those display areas. Those are the permanent changes. Some subtle changes to lights, but other than that, that's all.
Great.
So I wasn't here when that, when the application was made, but quick lane, obviously part of their automotive business, but what is it?
Quick lane is similar to Firestone Ram Auto Repair. It used to be the Saab dealership.
Section of Mitchell.
And Quick Lane is a branded product, I believe.
I think it's Ford, yeah.
Ford's oil chain. Oh, okay. Yeah, I figured it was a Quiklube type of product, but I couldn't tell from the sign.
Again, Design Review will pick this up on the 17th.
Did they get rid of the colonial doors, and go back to the metal-y looking ones?
The...
They seem to be less colonial, on the other, I'm sorry, on the other.
On the quick?
Yeah.
I can check that, Donna?
They look much better now.
They may, they just may be rendered, rendered differently.
Yeah, they seem more horizontal again, but, okay.
Thanks.
Our staff is recommending that you table that until April 17th.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we table application 1700 to our, to our regular meeting scheduled for April 17th, at 7:00 AM.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We should know that Chairman Ryan is here? Has been deposed. Next item is application 1710 of SL Simsbury LLC, owner for site plan approval for development of the bridge at Topwood Mountain.
Again, Mr. Chairman, with regards to this application, you're receiving it this evening. We did receive an application to the Conservation Commission for their inland wetlands permit process. With regards to the application in front of Conservation, they are not seeking a permit for the overall development, all of that is outside of the upland review area. They need to seek a permit for a multipurpose trail which crosses Minister Brook, as it heads in a southerly direction to the Hartford's southern parcel. And that is part of the requirement of the master plan for the northern portion. Also, you would need to refer this to the Conservation Commission for soil and erosion control review. They are the entity responsible for that. You cannot act as a zoning commission until you get a report from the inland wetlands in the state Conservation Commission. So Conservation Commission is asking, is doing two things, looking at ENS, now looking specifically, they have an application associated with the multi-purpose trail. We do have a representative here tonight from CA Ventures, who flew into Connecticut. If you would like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give him a moment just to say hello.
Chris Russ with CA Ventures, we represent the assisted living portion of the overall property. I know we're not doing a formal presentation tonight, but I always just like to be here when something's on, and look forward to hopefully in a couple weeks doing the full deal.
Great.
Again, they were, they were similar to you receiving the application tonight, Design Review just received it. Design Review has been working with both CA Ventures and Silverman with regards to their architecture. They've met on two occasions since the approval of the master plan. The information included in your zoning packet is a representation of the outcome of those meetings, where the multifamily housing, both the stack flats and the townhouses have been modified due to discussions with Design Review, as well as the assisted living facility has been modified to address concerns of the Design Review Board, as well as staff.
Great.
Did Design Review ask them for elevations? They gave an elevation on the two commercial buildings from Hot Meadow Street, but what's the side?
We are missing two, there are four sides to those buildings, and we have elevations of two of each of those. We're missing the Farmington River side, and then the other side.
So you have asked them for those, yes. I didn't want them to...
We don't want the pretty Hollywood set to the side.
You go around and it's not...
The back.
The wall, yeah. It's the next wall.
Again, the intent is a four-sided building that mirrors those architectural elements, if we can...
So do we table this, or...
Staff would make a recommendation to table it.
For next, for our next meeting.
For your next meeting. Again, we are looking, 128 to Conservation. We are poring over the plans from Engineering, WPCA, Planning, I'm going over the landscape plans very diligently, because it's all part of the components of the master plan.
So Wetlands and Conservation see it tomorrow? Will they decide?
Wetlands will receive it tomorrow. Yes.
They won't see, they won't, they wait until their next meeting?
Process.
Sorry.
And then Wetlands Commission, by state statute, cannot act on an application that they receive on the same evening. They have to, there's a 14-day cooling-off period to allow someone to petition a public hearing. So whether the commission chooses to hold a hearing or not, or signatures of 25 people or more can petition the commission to hold a hearing.
We're not going to be able to decide next meeting either, because we won't have a decision.
You potentially may not be able to act on the 17th, because you won't have a report from Wetlands.
Right.
Again, the plans are very voluminous in nature, and it will take staff more than two weeks to go through it on our side.
Should we really table it till the next meeting, then?
I would make a recommendation to table it until the 17th, to allow the applicant to do a presentation before you.
Okay.
Again, if on the 17th you have a question, we would like to have the applicant, if we're not doing it, to respond, before we're here in May, when they would like you to perhaps take action, and you have a question.
Right.
That's fine.
And they will be back to present to the boards that...
They will be in attendance at probably the rest of your meetings.
Okay.
Again, before you table it, you do need to make the referral to the Conservation Commission, under Chapter 128 of the Town Code.
Do we need a motion, is it? Do we do it the same way?
A motion would be appropriate.
Right, do we have a motion to refer this to the Conservation Commission?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then a motion to table?
So moved.
All right. Second.
Second.
Done. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved unanimously. Okay, moving along, Application Catino 1711.
We didn't refer to that.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's okay. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, application 1711 of Sea Tech Solar, Agent Town of Simsbury, owner for a site plan amendment for installation of solar array on the property located at 73 Walcott Road.
Again, Mr. Chairman, unless you have questions, the staff were recommending that you table that until April 17th. We have referral matters with East Grand.
Just to turn it off.
Okay.
We haven't heard back from them.
Do we have a motion table?
Make a motion to table application 1711 to our next meeting, we're 17th at 7:00.
April 17th?
Of April, yes, I'm behind. April 17th at 7:00.
Okay.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proven unanimously. All right, discussion of the general commission business, discussion of new and ongoing projects. Is there any discussion here, Jim?
Under zoning regulations and ongoing projects, again, we still continue to pick away with the draft review that Glenn Chalbler prepared for us. I would hope to have, if we get through April with applications, that I'd like to reserve some time in May to start actively looking back at the zoning regulations as we go through May, June, July. I know you don't meet as a commission in August. That's good for two factors, that gives us an opportunity as staff to not handle applications and to delve into some of our backlog on the regulatory side. And then, moving on to the moratorium, as I mentioned last month, I've had discussions with the developers on Hoskins Road about potentially modifying the language at your request, to look at landing the workforce housing zone permanently on Hoskins Road, modifying the language to allow that development to move forward with slight modifications, and also dealing with the moratorium. But not losing the sight that the workforce housing zone also needs work as we move forward in the overall regulations. More specifically, not necessarily the language, but where it is most appropriate.
Right.
Okay. And item two would be the executive session, and...
Mr. Chairman, with regards to Agenda Item 2, Executive Session Litigation, Richard Schoenhardt versus the Town of Simsbury Zoning Commission, staff is making a recommendation based on conversations with counsel that you table this, this evening. Bob DiCruzenza said he would be available on the 17th to attend that meeting, and he would like an opportunity to discuss those matters in executive session with you.
Great.
Do we have a motion to table?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we table the executive session table our regularly scheduled meeting on April 17th, 2017, at 7:00.
Next second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, now that the real chairman is here...
You guys are setting a record. We're trying.
Actually, we talked about amending the agenda to actually vote for a secretary, so that we don't have to go through an interim secretary next time this happens.
Okay.
We want to make sure you are okay.
I'm okay.
All right, well, then we make a motion then.
Does he... Is he a part of the meeting?
Yeah, let's...
One, two, three, four, no, I'm here.
Make a...
Mr. Chairman, from a procedural standpoint, you would need to seat Tom for Jerry.
Well, how about I seat...
Or seat David.
Oh, yeah, okay, can we seat David for...
You could do that.
Yeah. Yeah, we seat David.
But again, it's, technically, you can't seat a regular member.
Right. So then we'll reseat Tom for Jerry.
But rather than doing any of that fun stuff, we have his blessing.
You have a four.
I'm a member and I'm here and you only had five.
Yeah, right. We seated Tom in your absence.
In your absence.
You're not a member.
So you're not here.
Then you could be for Jerry.
Yes, so we reseat Tom for Jerry.
And we can't let the minutes reflect that, that upon Mr. Ryan's arrival, that Tom was seated for Jerry.
Tom was...
Tom is the new Jerry.
Is he the new Jerry?
Okay, then we'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda for the election of a secretary. So moved. All right, second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And then there's a suggestion for a secret secretary.
Who wants to be secretary?
I think he raised his hand.
Yes.
Oh, no.
I get all nominated.
What's that?
He's kind of nominating me here off the hook.
Thank you, Lord.
Any other nominations? All right, do we have a second on his nomination?
I will second Kevin Gray for secretary position.
All right, do we have a vote then? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, then it's passed.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And that time, Mike, you don't have to worry about it. All right, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Peace out.